Twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. The invocation was scheduled to be given by North Cleveland Church God Pastor Mark Williams, but he I don't think is here, so be given by Commissioner Thompson, pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Louis Alford, please stand.
Right. Your Lord.
Amen.
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
The next we'll have the roll call, please call the roll.
Goins.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Mason.
Here.
Ledford.
Here.
Rogers, Winters, Beatty.
Here.
Hughes, Alford.
Present.
Cry.
Here.
Blake.
Here.
Collins, Gilbert and Thompson. It's nine present and five absent.
Thank you. Now entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes. Thompson on the motion and the second is going. Open for discussion. No discussion, call the roll, please.
Goins.
Here. Yes, yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
It's nine in favor and none opposed and five absent.
And I'd like to welcome the Director of Schools, Dr. Cash, for being with us. And we'll now go to the Mayor, County Mayor, for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, everyone. Appreciate you all being here today and let's finish up this year on a good note and approve a budget for next year. Uh, the only thing I have for you is I'm asking for you to update the American Rescue Plan, and that's the two sheets that you should have in front of you with boxes. I'll very briefly go over it and then if you have any questions. On the first page, uh, not much changed there at all from the last time you saw it. Central worker sewer, broadband, public water and affordable housing is all the same. There have been two or three things added to the bottom of the middle box. And then when you total all three, there's five, six boxes there, when you total them all together, you come to the twenty million, nine hundred ninety-nine thousand, one hundred dollars that we received from the federal government. So that has every penny of that committed to those various things. The second sheet is what you haven't seen yet. Starting with this new budget year, we're actually working off of the interest. And if you go down this box, uh, you'll show expenses that have occurred so far and then what we're planning to do this next year. And we're actually using interest from COVID, uh, from ARP, not the ARP money itself. And it shows, for example, revenue at the six thirty, I guess six twenty-eight is really what it should say, per trustee, there's approximately eight hundred thousand going to be added to that account from interest. And so using that amount, and then that could be eight hundred and twenty, or it could be seven ninety, but, uh, approximately eight hundred thousand will be added in interest. And then you go on down that box and you'll see how it's planned to be spent. Everything on both of these sheets is in the budget that you're approving today, except for the last three items of this box here, the, the interest box. The community, Cleveland State Scholarships are not in the budget yet, they'll take an amendment in August to do. The Menace Fire and the Tasso Fire Roof are in the plan that I'm asking you to approve, but they're not budgeted yet. If at some point we'll come back to you and ask for those amendments if you agree. So having said that, I'll stop. Is there any questions about any of this?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the Menace Fire parking lot, the date is six one twenty-four, is that date correct?
It should say seven one twenty-four, I'm sorry. Correct that. Um, is that the only question you had about it? I'll go ahead and say this, on those two last items, uh, hopefully you guys will be approving in the near future a agreement with the city to build the fire garage there at that location. And if you do, the parking is an issue. We've got property, but it's a big bank. And there's also an island of dirt that should be paved. And so what that does is, that's what it's estimated to cost to make that, level that out and make a parking lot. The Tasso Fire Roof is something that's coming up this next budget year that we weren't able to budget in the Fire Department. Uh, it's gonna need to be replaced. It's the first station we built and it's due. So those two things are needs, the first one, the dirt one, is a, a need if the first thing occurs with the building. But they're not budgeted, they'll have to come back to your approval to be budgeted. Other questions?
Any other question?
If not, the good thing is, remember on the first sheet, that's how you have spent your twenty-one million dollars, twenty million, nine hundred ninety-nine thousand, one hundred dollars. To the penny, that's how it's committed. Now, it'll end up being some pennies difference, so there'll be a dollar savings at various places that will go to this next budget, the interest budget. So, but this, the interest budget also shows you a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars yet to be spent, yet to be committed. So you know you've got that much, you've got more than that because of lots of odd amounts that'll be saved in these various lines, plus that's not taking into consideration interest that will come in, in this next budget year that begins Monday. And so we're gonna try to slow these projects down as much as possible, so it, it'll still be in the bank and it'll help with the interest. But you know at least you've got the hundred and eighty-five thousand, okay? If there's no other questions, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Oh wait, I do need you to approve the plan so it becomes part of the minutes and I can make that part of my report to the state, I mean to the feds, sorry.
Can we put that in the minutes? It'll be done, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to have a motion for the consent agenda, please. Goins on the motion, Thompson on the second. Open for discussion. No discussion, call the roll, please.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Alford. Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
It's nine in favor, none opposed and five absent.
We'll now move to reports from the committees and our districts. We'll start on our left with Commissioner Ledford, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, just one item, I just wanna thank the Mayor and, uh, his staff, the Finance Committee. Uh, our major goal here, uh, our major job as a commission, as a body, is to, uh, balance the budget or to approve the budget and to levy our taxes, uh, for our citizens. Uh, this is only my second budget, and I think the Mayor had quoted earlier, he's had twenty-eight budgets without a tax increase. I think that's quite an accomplishment.
Twenty-four.
Oh, just twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Anyway, uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Mason, please.
Thank you, Chairman Cry. Uh, everything's well in the six districts, been having usual calls from constituents about road concerns. Uh, big shout out to Tom Collins and all his supervisors over there for making it happen, getting roadways and ditches and stuff cleaned out. We see, we, all of us commissioners know what a hard job and y'all work tirelessly, thank you for that. One thing I have is, Mr. Chairman, the road, the Road Committee will meet July the thirty-first at nine AM here in the Commission Room, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Slater, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to report today.
Commissioner Goins?
District's doing well, still working on him street.
Are you working or the city working?
He helping the city.
Oh, Commissioner Thompson, please.
I'd just like to say that Bradley County Road Department's been working out my way this week, doing some paving, the week before last, and I appreciate that very much. That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, could I interrupt?
Yeah.
I know Commissioner Thompson prayed, but in case it didn't get all the way up, the pastor is here now, could we bring him up and let him pray again for us? We appreciate him coming. We didn't wait on you, Pastor, we went ahead and prayed without you, but would that be okay, Mr. Chairman?
That'd be fine, we would love to have him come up, sir. Please stand for the, this doesn't belittle Commissioner Thompson. We need all we can get.
Thank you very much. Let's, Father, today I thank you for the opportunity to join Commissioner Thompson and all who are here today in praying to you. Thank you for the privilege, Lord, to stand in these hallowed halls, carry on the work for city and county government. Thank you. Thank you that you hear and that you care for every one of us. I present to you today, Lord, each of these commissioners, their families. Pray that you would care for them, bless them and prosper throughout this summer. Pray for our County Mayor today, that you would continue to strengthen him by your presence and by your spirit. We present to you, the residents of this county, we pray that you would bless them, that you would strengthen them, that you would cause your face to shine upon them, be gracious unto them, that you would lift up your countenance upon them, bless them with peace in this, in these troubled, uncertain times. Love every other voice, may we hear yours, in whose name and for whose glory we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, sir. Next will be Commissioner Blake, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, two things, real quick, uh, an update on the constable, uh, chatted with Crystal the other day, the second paragraph in that bill is automatic, we didn't have to do anything on that. The first paragraph, we do, I've chatted with the constables, they would like to, uh, have a service fee for, Crystal, help me if I say this right, a writ of possession, is that right, when they evict somebody, something like that, of eighty-five dollars. Crystal's working on the language, and I suspect that we'll have a, a resolution on the agenda at the next voting session, but just, that's just an update on that initiative. Second, Finance met earlier today, we have one amendment that needs to be done. The amendment is as follows, we are, this is, uh, for the fire, um, we are increasing the revenue in the, uh, Fund One Twenty-One, Account Four Six Nine Nine Zero of fifty-seven thousand, and we are increasing the expense in Fund One Twenty-One, Account Five Four Three One Zero, line item one ninety-six, in-service pay, also of fifty-seven thousand. Mr. Chairman, I put this in the form of motion, thank you.
Second from Commissioner Slater, open for discussion. No discussion, call the roll, please.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
It's nine in favor, none opposed and five absent.
Thank you.
Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I wish everyone a happy fourth, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Alford, please.
Yes, sir, second district's doing well, I was gonna do a nice little presentation today, but I understand some people got upset, thought I was gonna do something about the budget, I'm not against the budget in any form, so we're not gonna kill the budget today. So, anyway, uh, I'm gonna put that off to a work session, yeah, July the eighth. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Beatty, please.
Everything's doing well in the first district.
Thank you very much. We'll now move along to the, no unfinished business, move along to the approval of the agenda, entertain a motion. Goins, second.
Second.
Second on Beatty. All right. Call the roll, please.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
It's nine in favor, none opposed and five absent.
We'll now proceed to Agenda Item A, Commissioner Malin Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good afternoon, Mayor Davis, Commissioners and residents of Bradley County. We are here today in accordance to a Tennessee Code annotated nine dash twenty-one dash four oh three B, which requires this commission to set the annual tax rate and to adopt by resolution a balanced budget. The central question asked every year at this time is, will my taxes increase? So I'll cut to the chase, Bradley County tax rates will remain the same as we turn the page to a new fiscal year. Property tax remains at one point four three nine two, fire tax inside the fringe stays at point three three eight six, and fire tax outside the fringe remain, maintains the current rate point three five four zero. It is also important to note our penny value in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five will be three hundred and eighteen thousand. Many years ago, two hundred and forty-eight years to be exact, on Thursday, the Second Continental Congress adopted the Declaration of Independence, which includes, and I quote, "All men are created equal, that they are endowed by the Creator with certain ineligible rights, that among these are life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness," end quote. We all know these words and we appreciate the assert, assertions they provide as we live our lives. They ring true, especially this time of year, as we plan to celebrate our freedom next week with family and friends. As your Finance Chairman, I am ever mindful that beyond our task as county legislative body to set the tax rate and to adopt a balanced budget, we must endeavor to provide a community that truly allows our citizens to feel safe and served as they live, study and work in the pursuit of happiness. I firmly believe our founding fathers would sign, who signed the Declaration of Independence, would be proud of the efforts Bradley County has made and continues to make to serve our citizens. This commission, our mayor, elected officials, department heads, worked throughout the year to identify opportunities to improve services to all Bradley County residents. We all can agree that employees are the backbone of any organization or business. I'm happy to share that this budget continues this, the, the trend to invest in our employees, allowing for recruitment and retention of the best and the brightest. We appreciate all Bradley County employees for effectively serving residents and with professionalism and care. Bradley County offers top-notch emergency services to residents, and this budget continues to fund resources needed for these departments to continue exceptional service. We strive to provide every gallant and intrepid first responder with all possible rate resources as they run into face of danger to preserve public safety. This budget includes fire turnout gear, vehicles, station repairs, EMS medical equipment and vehicles, sheriff patrol vehicles and equipment, and an additional SRO at a Coe Middle School. We know these first responders face horrific and traumatic events in the line of duty. I'm proud that this budget again includes mental health services funding for our first responders. It is okay for our heroes to ask for help and we are ready to respond to their needs. Speaking of heroes, I appreciate the Bradley County School leadership taking initiative a few years ago to increase teacher pay. Education is vital to the health of a community and the best investment we can make in education is our teachers. Amendment to education allows us to attract and retain the most dynamic and inspiring educators to Bradley County. You've heard the old saying, if you think education is expensive, try ignorance. I tip my hat to Bradley County Schools for their innovative shift in ido- ideology, said that wrong, from not just K through twelve, but K to J, kindergarten to jobs. We now have Pi Center graduates sharing their success stories and how Pi launched their careers. These graduates are testaments to Bradley County's commitment to education and workforce development. A side note, you are welcome to walk down to Johnson Park this afternoon to see Pi students working to overhaul the park. Eight percent of those working on the improvement of the park are Pi Center students. This is a tremendous experience for them and an opportunity for them to contribute to our community and to be a part of the fabric of Cleveland. Further evident, further evidence of our commitment to education is a resolution passed by this body last month committing fifteen point one million dollars to construct a new academic building at Hopewell Elementary School. May I attempt to allow you further, there is no need to borrow for this project, we have a plan to fully fund this project without borrowing. During my commission tenure, we have often hoped for a time when we could take on a major project without borrowing. Our wise stewardship and commitment to conservative fiscal management has paid off, the time is now. Speaking of debt, this budget is set to reduce the county's overall debt by seven point five million dollars, resulting in our lowest total debt liability in twenty years. Mayor and fellow Commissioners, this is an outstanding, especially coupled with paying cash for a new academic building. Indeed, the future of Bradley County is bright and deeming with opportunity. The safety of our roads, our, the safety of our county roads is a priority for this commission. Last year, we invested five hundred thousand in road striping and reflectors to enhance the safety and the flow of traffic after dark. Today, over a hundred and fifty miles of county roads have been striped with forty percent of the allocated funds. So stay tuned, more striping and reflecting coming to a road near you. Additionally, this budget includes equipment for the Road Department, including a dump truck, a mini excavator, resurfacing projects. Road employees with their CDL licenses and skills are in high demand. I applaud Superintendent Collins for his efforts to provide competitive wages to these employees in order to maintain a strong staff. There are lots of handprints on the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, there are two sets of prints that have touched this last budget, this last Bradley County budget. Bradley County Schools Finance Director Susan Willcutt and Bradley County Finance Director Renee Samples will retire this year. Susan and Renee, it has been my honor to work with you and to learn from you. I wish you both the best in the next chapter. They say teamwork makes the dream work. Thank you, elected officials, department heads, mayor, staff, finance committee and the County Commission for collaborating to assemble this budget that will provide a community for resi- for residents to pursue their happiness. Should anyone, citizen or government official, wish to sit down with me and review any piece of this budget, I'm happy to do so. You have a right to know and fully understand how your tax dollars are allocated. With that, Mr. Chairman, I present to you the twenty-four, twenty-five budget resolution.
Thank you.
There we go.
Second on Commissioner Slater, open for discussion.
I need to read the caption real quick, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, sir.
Be it resolved by the, by the County Commission of Bradley County, Tennessee, assembled in regular session on the twenty-eighth day of June, twenty twenty-four, that the combined property tax rate for Bradley County, Tennessee for fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-four shall be the state of Tennessee certified tax rate of one point four three nine two of each one hundred dollars of taxable property, which is a prior revenue for each in the following funds and otherwise conformed to the following levies. And you can see the breakdown and itemization there. Now I'll put that in the form of motion, thank you.
You still on the second there, Commissioner Slater?
Sorry about that.
Any discussion? No discussion, call the roll, please.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Alford. Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
It's nine in favor, none opposed and five absent.
Thank you. Agenda Item B, Commissioner Blake, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this sets the appropriations, Section One, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Bradley County, Tennessee, assembled in regular call session on the twenty-eighth day of June, twenty twenty-four, that the amounts hereafter set out are hereby appropriated for the purpose of meeting the expenses of various funds, departments, institution, offices and agencies of Bradley County, Tennessee, for the capital outlay and for the meeting of payments of principal and interest on the county's debt maturing during the fiscal year beginning July twen- July first, twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, according to the following schedule. And you can see the itemization, which is a reflection of your budget, I put that in the form of motion, thank you.
Do I have a second, please? Second on Commissioner Slater, open for discussion. There be no discussion, call the roll, please.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
I'm gonna read my, uh, agenda, because I'm an employee of the Bradley County Sheriff's Office, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and my obligation to my constituents and the citizens of this body represents a vote yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Beatty.
Uh, I'm gonna read this, because my wife is an employee and so constabulary office, I have a conflict of interest in the pro- proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answers only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens of the body represents, yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
It's nine in favor, none opposed and five absent.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Before you go on, can I point out two things? I do this sometimes, but sometimes I forget.
Please.
In that resolution you just passed, there are thirteen sections. Nobody ever reads the fine print, but I want to point out, Section Five, any resolution which may hereinafter be presented to the Board of County Commissioners, providing for appropriations in addition to those made by this budget appropriation resolution, shall specifically provide sufficient revenue or other funds actually to be provided during the fiscal year in which the expenditure is to be made to meet such additional appropriation. Instead, appropriating resolution then must be submitted to the State Director of Local Finance after its adoption as provided by code so-and-so. So keep that in mind if you're wanting to increase the budget somewhere along the line. Another important thing is Section Twelve, be it further resolved that new major purchases or capital purchases approved under this budget or, or even with prior year POs should be delayed until approximately January, except for emergencies due to the timing of revenue collections and to help with cash flow. It's two important sections in this resolution you just approved, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Let's see, we, we talked about, right? We'll now go to Agenda Item C, Commissioner Malin Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is the resolution that sets the fire tax rates. Be it resolved by the County Commission of Bradley County, Tennessee, assembled in regular session on the twentieth day of June, twenty twenty-four, that pursuant to Tennessee Code annotated five dash seventeen dash one zero six, this County Commission hereby lays an annual fire tax upon property owners of Fire District Two, rule in the amount of point five, I'm sorry, point three five four zero on each one hundred taxable property located within the county but outside the Fire District One. Point three three eight six of each one hundred taxable property located within the Fire District One for fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-four, which is deemed by this commission to be to pay the budget for the County Fires Department, or County Fire District. Put that in the form of motion, thank you.
Do I have a second, please? Second on Commissioner Thompson, open for discussion. No discussion, call the roll, please.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Alford. Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
It's nine in favor, none opposed and five absent.
We'll now move to Agenda Item D, Commissioner Malin Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, before I read this one, if, uh, you don't mind, uh, the comments I made earlier, if you could have those added to the minutes, I would appreciate that. All right, this is the resolution for the nonprofits, um, a resolution making appropriations to nonprofits, charitable organizations of Bradley County, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. You can see that they're itemized, uh, in the previous, in the, the, in the, uh, sheets here, and they are in our budget. I put that in the form of motion, thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second, please? Second ongoing, open for discussion. There be no discussion, call the roll, please.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Alford.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
It's nine in favor, none opposed and five absent.
Thank you. Moving along to Agenda Item A, Commissioner Alford, please.
Yes, the resolution authorizing the Bradley County Mayor to extend the license and service agreement with P A C ten incorporate global software free, period of four years for the continued use of law enforcement and jail records management software system, Jail Track, P A C ten and Correct Track of Bradley County Sheriff's Office, for a total amount for a total amount of four hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars. Uh, put that in the form of a motion, sir.
Do I have a second, please? Commissioner Thompson on the second. Open for discussion. There be no discussion. Call the roll, please.
Goins?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mason?
Yes.
Ledford?
Yes.
Beatty?
Yes.
Alford?
Yes.
Cry?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
It's nine in favor, none opposed, and five absent.
Chairman, before we leave that?
Yes.
All the lost stuff. Uh, hey, the meeting, I, I think Ms. Laurie sent it out to everyone tomorrow morning, uh, Monday morning at ten o'clock at the jail. A demonstration on some safety equipment for the sheriff's department. I saw this on TV the other day, and, uh, I think if you attend this meeting, you'd be more than impressed about something that would be a safety factor for the sheriff's office. So, anyway, I, I just only encourage any of you that's got free time at ten o'clock Monday at the sheriff's office, uh, a demonstration from this company. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move along to communication from the audience. Is there anyone in the audience? Come, uh, yes, Director Cash.
Um, so I'm Linda Cash. I'm Director of Schools for Bradley County. I live, uh, at thirty-five fifty Willow Oaks, April. Um, I just want to say thank you to this commission, and in particularly to Chairman Cry and to Malin Blake and the rest of you for always working with the, uh, with the education side of Bradley County schools. As I read the paper and I am delving into what happens around other places in Tennessee, um, the relationship that we have together, uh, about making best choices and being good stewards of money and funding is above and beyond anything that I, that I have ever seen or witnessed to be a part of. So from the bottom of my heart, and, and behalf of all the employees in Bradley County schools, I want to say thank you. Um, it's always a pleasure to work with you and talk with you. And, um, um, money's hard to argue about, but we seem to always come to a, a place where we can work together. I also want to thank the mayor. Um, he is consistently, uh, working with us and talking with us and making sure that together we are making the money work on both sides. So, again, I want to say thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Roy Michael Roman, uh, citizen of the Second District, one twenty-one Covington Drive Northeast, Cleveland, Tennessee. Um, just wanted to say thank you to the commission for, um, as the president of the Museum and Cultural Center at five points for the, uh, the dollars committed to the museum. Uh, it's all greatly appreciated. We wanted to extend our appreciation. So, thank you, guys, and thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, uh, Commissioner Blake, for running a, a great deal here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Roy. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Okay, uh, the announcements, we, we have the Monday morning demonstration at the sheriff's department. We have a work session July the eighth at twelve PM. And the county offices will be closed July the fourth in observance.